This time we call a meeting to order. I need an approval of the September twenty-second, twenty twenty-five minutes. Motion, Dr. Second?
I second him. But I have a... I wasn't here last time, and I think my name is going to be as being present. I just want to change that.
Direct that on the record. Otherwise, it's second.
Yes.
All in favor?
Uh...
Motion back. Sorry. Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So what we have here... What we have here tonight is a case of administrative review regarding eight digital sign permits. I will read the addresses of those permits. Five twelve West Main Street, eleven eighty-five Preston Street, seven sixteen North Church Street, three oh one West Seven Street, nine fifteen North Church Street, fifty-four ninety Bradford Hicks Drive, forty-two oh five Bradford Hicks Drive, and fifty-four seventy-six Bradford Hicks Drive. All these permits were submitted to our codes enforcement officer. The codes enforcement officer denied these permits, and so the applicant, Roland Media, is seeking administrative review to overturn the decision of the codes enforcement officer. So before we get into our public hearing, I'll ask if the applicant wants to address the board's own appeals. And please state your name for the record, please.
Do I need to turn this on?
Press the button, yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Thank you. My name is Carly Darby. I'm an attorney, and I'm here on behalf of Roland Digital Media. You stated that... I just wanted to clear a couple things up. So first, I think you mentioned it was an application for eight permits. I believe it was non-permits.
Okay. I have eight here in my hand. I know that we heard one last week. So are you saying that you submitted a total of ten permits that were...
No, it should be a total of nine.
Okay. So we heard one last month.
Okay.
So this will be eight.
Yes.
Okay.
So, as you mentioned, Roland sent the application. This was sent on or about July twenty-fourth of this year. In response to his application for the non-sign permit, Roland received a letter from Mr. Walter Rutherford erroneously categorizing Roland's Watchfire Digital Display. That's the type of digital billboard. That's the company that makes the digital display. Erroneously categorized it as a flashing sign pursuant to Section eleven two oh two point two-two of the municipal zoning ordinances at the city of Livingston. Not only that, but the letter fails to deny Roland's application and fails to mention his application at all. So again, we're here because no permits were given, and denial of those permits is ambiguous at that scene. Regarding Roland's proposed signs constituting flashing signs, I will reiterate that the same is erroneous. Roland's digital signs comply with both TDOT and the Highway Federal... Or, sorry, the Federal Highway Administration requirement. Each stationary ad runs for eight seconds before changing to the next stationary ad. The zoning ordinance defines flashing sign, as you all are well aware, as a directly or indirectly illuminated sign on which artificial light is not maintained stationary and constant in intensity and color at all times in use. Roland's proposed signs clearly don't fall within the city's definition of a flashing sign because the sign's display will be maintained in a stationary position and will remain constant in intensity and color at all times while in use. So, I mean, this is not the first time this has come up. This is the first time this issue's been before this board, but this issue's come up in other places as well. And when interpreting similar provisions on flashing signs, courts have concluded that such provisions to not prohibit digital signs like the ones proposed by Roland because such signs merely periodically change static images rather than flash. And I think that case was provided for you all with the letter that is the Village of Clemens case. Moreover, the Federal Highway Administration has made it clear that signs that change messages using digital technology do not violate the prohibition against intermittent or flashing or moving signs... Or, I'm sorry, moving lights. And you can refer to the memorandum dated September twenty-fifth, two thousand and seven. Essentially, Roland's proposed signs do not run afoul of the city's purported prohibition on flashing signs. The board should also reverse Mr. Rutherford's potential denial of Roland's application on the grounds that his proposed signs would violate the prohibition on flashing signs because it's a clear deviation from the city's prior interpretation of its own zoning ordinance. In his application for this appeal, Roland has provided several examples of the city allowing other sign applicants to use digital technology. To deny Roland the same opportunity that the city has afforded to others clearly violates Roland... Mr. Roland's equal protection rights under both the U.S. and Tennessee Constitution. I think Mr. Lemon, who was before this board last month, was a little more diplomatic than I am, and I'm just going to call this what it is. It's homecoming outsider, and it's clear. And so my question is, when is that going to stop? On the way here, I practice up here in Livingston. I frequently observe these legal signs. I observe signs with graphics literally flipping. And those clearly meet the definition of a flashing sign per the city's ordinance. Another reason this potential denial is problematic is that the ordinance... The zoning ordinance exempts government signs from regulation. So, Section eleven two oh three point nine point three, Section C, provides no limitation, restrictions, or requirements herein are applicable to government signs. As such, the city could lawfully post signs identical in all respects to the signs requested by Roland. There's a Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals case that gives the example of the government could say, "Hey, everyone, go get your vaccines." But that would prohibit someone like Roland advertising for the local pharmacy to say, "Get your vaccine here." Indeed, based on the digital sign being used by the Livingston Chamber of Commerce, it appears the city makes good use of this exception. And of course, you all are familiar with that sign, and the same has been provided to you. Meanwhile, if Roland or any other person or entity wanted to post a physically identical sign, they would need to comply with the zoning ordinance. A broad exemption for government signs such as this has been viewed by courts to be content-based and unable to survive the very high bar of strict scrutiny. And referring back to the letter with the application that is cited by several cases. As this board has already heard, the city impermissibly regulates signs based on their content. That the city relies on content to determine whether or not a sign is allowed cannot be disputed based on Mr. Rutherford's handling of Roland's original application for the sign one oh six West Seventh Street. In his response, the email which you all have been provided, he literally says, "What will be advertised on the proposed sign?" He might as well have said, "What content are you putting on your sign?" That's exactly what he asked. The United States Supreme Court's decision, Reed versus Towne Gilbert, made it clear that government regulation of speech is content-based if the law applies to a particular speech because of the topic discussed or the idea or message expressed. The city's reliance on content as a factor to determine whether or not to permit a sign cannot be permitted. Finally, the Livingston zoning ordinance also fails to include any time limit on the processing of sign permit applications. Licensing schemes like the city's zoning ordinance that subject the exercise of First Amendment freedoms to the prior restraint of a license must contain certain procedural safeguards in order to avoid constituting an invalid prior restraint. And that is from the opinion Feed Children Incorporated versus Metro Government of Nashville Davidson County. The city's handling of Roland's second batch of permit applications demonstrates the need for time limit. So again, we're here. He applied a month ago. He hasn't received an actual denial. That letter in response, let's just call it what it is. It was the runaround. It doesn't even mention this application. It doesn't say, "In response to your application." It just says, "We think watchfire signs constitute flashing signs." So it's confusing. It's ambiguous. And the zoning ordinance's lack of a time period within which the city must grant or deny a sign permit, when coupled with the other constitutional issues that I've outlined, render the ordinance unconstitutional. And so, for these reasons, we are asking that the board determine that Roland's applications should be granted. And then I will allow you guys to ask some questions.
Any questions from the board from Mr. Darby? Thank you, Mr. Darby.
Thank you.
Mr. Gray?
Good evening, everyone. Again, we're here today on administrative review. And the role of the board on administrative review is to determine whether the building officials' decision is supported by a proper reading of the zoning code as you all interpret it. What happened here was Mr. Roland submitted eight sign permit applications. A ninth was considered last meeting. These were for watchfire digital display signs, which were a hundred and thirteen square feet in sign base area on a large metal pole structure, about twenty feet high. And the dimensions are included in a depiction in the permit application. Mr. Rutherford evaluated these watchfire digital display applications based on their size, their location, and considered whether there would be a flashing sign. It's been clarified both at this meeting and the last meeting and through Mr. Roland himself that these signs would change image at least every eight seconds. We have an ordinance that describes what a flashing sign is, and we have an ordinance that says flashing signs are illegal in all zoning districts. We have a definition here. There was no definition in the case for the town of Clemens in North Carolina. But here we have a definition to apply. And flashing signs are directly or indirectly illuminated sign on which artificial light is not maintained stationary and constant in intensity and color at all times in use. Does it say at least for eight seconds? It says at all times in use. And the signs proposed by Mr. Roland in these applications clearly constitute a flashing sign, which is illegal in the town of Livingston for that reason alone. The denial of these permits was proper. Also, which Mr. Rutherford mentioned, but which Mr. Darby did not, were the reasons given of this exceeds the maximum number of signs per sign structure and per side of a sign structure. Under eleven F two oh three point nine point three, Subsection J, there are a maximum of two signs per sign structure, and only one side... One sign is allowed on each side of a sign structure. So you can essentially just have a front and a back. The front and the back can be different, but if the... If one side changes every eight seconds, that's more than one sign per side of a sign structure, and it would violate that particular portion of the ordinance as well. And therefore, the denial was proper on that basis. Finally, this is a structured, supported ground sign. And we have rules regulating what a ground sign is and how big ground signs can be in each zoning district. All the sign applications in this case were in commercial districts except for, I believe, the Seventh Street application. That was in a residential district. In all districts, so residential and otherwise, other than commercial and industrial. A ground sign can be six square feet if it has a regular foundation that attaches it to the ground like a masonry structure. In commercial and industrial districts, you can have a sign area with twenty-four square feet. These sign bases are a hundred and thirteen square feet, clearly well beyond what the maximum size allowed is for a ground sign. So there are three separate and independent bases to deny these sign permits. These bases were conveyed to Mr. Roland on July thirty-first. His application is dated July twenty-fourth. So the permits were promptly denied. There's nothing ambiguous about this denial. It clearly sets out the reasons that it does not comply with the code and specifically cites the code sections. There was no response to that other than this administrative appeal. And it's clear that Mr. Roland knew that this was a denial of these sign permits because he filed an administrative appeal. We won't get into legalities of content neutrality like we did last time. But we've cited numerous cases that explain these signs are content neutral. The United States Supreme Court has confirmed that. The United States Circuit Court for the Sixth Circuit has confirmed that government signs are content neutral as well. And the role of this board is not to decide whether something is constitutional or not constitutional. That is for a court to decide. This role... This board's role is to decide whether the building official's denial of these permits was proper based on a reading of the code. It clearly was proper, and we would ask the board to affirm the building official's decision. Any questions?
Any questions from the board? All right. So thank you, Mr. Gray. At this time, what we'll do is we'll begin our public hearing. We will give each citizen three minutes to address the board. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand and be recognized and state your name for the record.
My name is Kelly Coleman. I'm a lifelong resident of Livingston, Overton County. I pay a lot of taxes. I pay a lot of business taxes. I served on the city council for four years. It's been a number of years ago. The city of Livingston City Council does not get everything perfectly right a hundred percent of the time. However, it was very clear to me during my four years, we had a mission to clean up and to limit additional... You can call them flashing signs. You can call them fire watch signs. I don't care what you call them. We worked hard to limit the proliferation of additional signs in our community. Did we cross every T and nod every I exactly right? I don't know. The city council has worked hard subsequent to that to even further title the city codes related to signs. Now, the attorney on behalf of Mr. Roland stated, "We call this home cooking." I call this follow the money. It's all about the money. If I'm in the advertising business, I want a digital sign, a billboard, on every corner of this town because that means money for me, right? The intent of this body, the city council, was to limit additional signs. Now, when I speak about money, I speak as a firsthand individual who has firsthand knowledge. Every time that this city of Livingston, which happens to scrape for every dime that the city gets for our parks, for city street paving, for work at the airport, you name it, we scrape. Our city has paid thousands and thousands, and I bet you hundreds of thousands of dollars directly or indirectly, defending sign ordinances because of advertisers from out of town, such as Mr. Roland. I'm tired of it. I'm angry. I'm disappointed. I suggest, and I'm coming to the city council meeting, I suggest that they make the rules even tighter and more clear to include specific sign manufacturers such as Firewatch. If that's what we need to do, I think that's what has to happen. The city council was clear. The intent is to limit more signs. Signs that we have in town that are flashing, they're grandfathered in. Okay? Yes, they're at the city police department. They're at the chamber. We can't do anything about that.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Next speaker. Go ahead. State your name, please.
Barbie Waters. I've spoken at this before, trying to defend our codes, which has been a lot of effort put into codes for this town to make it beautiful, homey, just like we'd want. We don't want eight or nine digital signs all over town. The citizens don't want them. We're asking you to please follow the codes. Let us have a town that we're proud of. Whether they're flashing or not, if something's changing every eight seconds, the lighting and the color is changing. To me, that's flashing. But it doesn't really matter. We don't want them. We're asking you, the board, to stand by this and not get into this appeal that we don't want as citizens of this town. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Gray. Please state your name.
My name is Ron Lane, Livingston resident. I'm not smart enough to know about definitions and all those sorts of things, but it seems to me that if our town has a rule that says we're not supposed to do something, I would like to not do that, please. So I'm mirroring what has just been said. As just an ordinary citizen, doesn't know very much about what's being written down. The concept of a Las Vegas strip is not what Livingston is all about. Livingston is more about low-end rural community. This citizen would like to keep it that way. I would urge this group to follow the ordinance and not allow the sign. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else?
Trying to help you.
Hey, folks. I just want to give a little history lesson.
You state your name.
Dave Roland, Roland Digital Media. I was asked here twice by local businessmen. Two thousand and fifteen, David Sabre asked me to come before the planning commission to talk about digital signs. I had no idea. Didn't want to put one up. We got plenty of signs playing all over Livingston. Soon after that, a local businessman made a request, says, "You put a sign up. I'll be the first one to go on it." We went through that iteration. Fast forward ten years, tell the local business people, we need a sign. Folks, in spite of what Ms. Coleman said about me, it's all about the money. We've got signs in twenty-two counties. Most of them have digital signs. In Cookeville, there are a hundred and twenty-one billboards. That's poles. Multiple faces, over twenty-five digitals. Some mine, some of the competition, Walmart of Louisiana. Cookeville, I know you want to hear this, it's going to sting. Putnam County has ten times retail sales of Livingston. You say, "What did we do about that? Why does it have to do with a sign?" Has to do with one thing. The people that come from the north, from Dale Hall Lake, kind of Highway one eleven, Highway fifty-two, when they come to that intersection, they're on the way to Allgood or Interstate Drive. They pass a Walmart in Allgood. By the way, that Walmart, they pass a Burger King and McDonald's. You have a little chance to slow them down with a sign right there. Again, you've got a wonderful downtown. You've got a wonderful park. How are you going to get them over there? Over and over, I've been requested by locals, small business people, to have a sign there to direct folks downtown. Several years ago, around two thousand and three, as I understand it, maybe some of y'all remember, some won't. I think the request came from Bentonville, Arkansas. They want to put Walmart in Overton County. As I understand it, I may be wrong, but some folks got together and said, "We really don't think we need a Walmart in Overton County." I think the response was, "You'll never have to worry about that again." Well, guess what? It's in Allgood. Allgood receives about two hundred thousand dollars a month and then a portion of sales taxes. Folks, we're not talking about signs. We're talking about dollars and cents. The same thinking that's here tonight opposing this is what brought Walmart to Allgood in Putnam County. Thank you very much.
My name is Suzie Mountie, and I have lived in Livingston apartment five years now. Our home is located basically in the center of where all these signs are going. I already have three street lights and church lights and blackout curtains so we can sleep at night. I left Cookeville after five years because it looks like a downtrodden Las Vegas.
My name is Rita Richardson. I've lived in Livingston for two and a half years. We moved here from Nashville. We thought about living in Cookeville, but we didn't like the sprawl. We chose this town because it doesn't have flashing signs and billboards everywhere. Please uphold the ordinance. Thanks.
Tom? Yes, sir.
I may always hate to say, me say this, but I'm a little bit confused.
Can you state your name for the record?
I thought we were here...
Arnaud. What's your name?
Oh, say my name? You got to talk loud to me. You know that. Arnaud Proctor.
Thank you, sir.
I thought we were here to decide if Walter made... I thought we were here to decide if Walter made a mistake in denying the things. Not about lying different sign sizes, not about the allocation of where they were, simply to see if Walter made the right decision. Am I correct?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any more public comment? Okay.
We will close the public hearing and reopen the business meeting.
So again, what, what is in front of us as Board of Zoning Appeals will be the question, did our codes enforcement officer at the time properly interpret the zoning code with regards to these eight digital sign permits? And in doing so, properly deny these eight sign permits? That's what's in front of us today. Have any questions?
Some of these street names on here, uh, one of them's questionable, was one Preston Street and West Seventh Street. Those commercial areas or residential?
West Seventh is residential, but Preston, I think, is street, pretty important.
So I think that's a bypass.
Probably. I can't say for sure.
Because I know ninety-five percent of Preston's streets are residential.
Any more questions? David, anything?
I'm gonna look for, do I have a motion?
I made that motion, that we uphold Walter's, uh, decision on these signs.
Okay.
I'll say, can it?
Call it off. So we have a motion by Shirley Myers to uphold the decision of the codes enforcement officer with regards to the eight digital sign permits from Roland Media, Roland to Media. We have a second by Tommy Rooker. So a voice of, a vote of yes or aye is going to uphold the decision, and a vote of no or nay is to not uphold the decision. Any questions regarding the motion on the floor? Tommy Rooker? Shirley Myers?
Aye.
David Lohr?
Yes.
Daniel Lohr?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes, vote of all ayes.
Thank you, Tommy.
Okay, without any further business, we do have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a second. All afever?
Aye.
We're adjourned.